Take on. Yeah. It's funny. I hit this noseband. One place here is moaning and groaning. I thought it was full of ninety. One time it was a grand mason. It was twelve feet. We had eighteen inches in our house. So there's one. I live in Florence.
In Florence?
Okay. Kind of like the gun shop there. Everywhere at most probably the place in town. So we kind of feel, see, we kind of see. We're the what? The setup. Backyard. Eighteen inches. Oh, yeah. That's what it is. It's not bad.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Fremont County Planning Commission to order. And while I will call the rule, John Hammerick, I am here, Derry Brown, here. Gardner Fay?
Yes, sir.
John Carper?
Here.
Rudele Mergelmann?
Here.
Travis Payne?
Here.
And Dale McCullough?
Here.
Afternoon, gentlemen. With that, we'll conduct the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have an agenda in front of us today. Has anybody identified any changes that we need to make to our agenda?
Move for approval.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. That was a double second there. All those in favor say aye. Rudele, you want to start, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen. We do have the minutes from the January 2nd, twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. Has, is, hopefully you've had a chance to review those and have found them to be the usual high-quality minutes that we get. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Thank you, John.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Now, let's, well, let's start at this end.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Do we have any unfinished business in front of us? Okay, we do have some new business. One of the, one of the housekeeping things that we need to take care of this time is the, we have elected a chairman, and thank you all for that, I think. But we do need to elect a vice chairman. And so the chair is open to nominations for vice chair.
I'll make a motion or I'll nominate Travis Payne to be vice chair.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any other, any other nominations?
I move nomination cease.
Second.
Thank you, Rudele. Since it, there are no other nominations in front of us, I think that we can by acclamation appoint Travis Payne as a, as a vice chair. Congratulations and my condolences.
Thank you. I think.
All right. Thank you for that. We now have in front of us LLA 23-009 Canyon Farms. And would you like to take that, Dan?
All right. I'm actually going to have Planning Coordinator Adamic take this one. Lot line adjustments are normally one of the criteria that she works on.
Thank you.
She's more familiar than I am.
Great.
Hello, guys. How are you? Do two things. I wanted to give you just a minute. Sorry.
Why did this come here instead of Boza?
So what this is, it being it's a variance from the subdivision regulations, it can't go in front of Boza. Any variance from the subdivision goes to Planning Commission and to the board. So that's why it's here. If it was, I guess, a setback issue for like buildings or whatnot with the zoning regulations, then it would go in front of Boza.
Thank you.
There's a plan. So this is Lot Line Adjustment 23-009 for Canyon Farms. The owner is Robert Wright. The consultant is Matt Koch. They're requesting a variance from the Fremont County Subdivision Regulations Appendix 1, Section B 10, the lot standards. In our language, it says where possible, the depth of the lot should not be greater than twice its width. The reason for the variance request is the water service for Lot 2 would cross over the southeast corner of Lot 1. The future purchaser of Lot 1 would like to keep the service line on the property it serves. Lot 1 would be three acres. Lot 2 is eleven point six. Sorry. It meets all of our zoning regulations besides the, the width of the, no, I'm sorry. Scratch that, guys. It meets all of our zoning regulations. The only one it's not meeting is our subdivision regulations, which it's where the lot is greater twice than its width. It's here. Sorry. Not very prepared, no. The department, what we would recommend is denial of this variance. We feel they can reconfigure the proposed lot and add an easement for the water line that goes through the lot itself. Our general standards, the design and development of subdivision shall preserve, insofar as possible, the natural terrain, natural drainage, wildlife habitats, mineral resources, areas of existing topsoil and trees. None of those are being affected by reconfiguring where it would meet our subdivision regulations. So that would be our recommendation to you guys.
Thank you. And do we have a is that everything from the staff?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Matt, I see you're here. Would you like to give us a presentation on this?
Sure. She covered most of the specifics on it. So this is located out on Adams. It's at the very dead end of Adams. Basically, to the east is the prison property, to the south is the prison property. It's all agricultural in that area. They are building a new house on the big lot. Their existing house will be on the smaller lot, which is the one they're selling. The purchaser was wanting three acres. That way they could do some agricultural things, tie that to their house. When they built their house, they ran the water service, as well as the electric, we found out, from that southwest corner over to the new house. So there's two utilities that will, would actually end up on the lot that's not theirs that would service their house. So there is some concern there. They want to, they want to try to keep the three acres, to keep the sale of that property and not do any damage or anything in the future. You know, we can put them in easements and stuff, but it still impacts the property. If there's any work that needs to be done, they got to go in there with their equipment and tear up the fields and the agricultural stuff and, and fix it. So we really want to keep that on the property it belongs on.
Thank you. Do we have questions from the commission?
I have a couple.
Rudele?
Is this property already sold?
It's under contract.
So it's under contract with the original?
With this, with this configuration.
With this, which is not?
Which?
Has that, that one been approved or the?
No, so this is the one we're asking for the variance for. If we have to, if we have to reconfigure it, we'll have to make it not as tall and then slide it to the east over across their utilities and everything.
Okay. And the other question I had, what's the reason for not wanting the lot? And what it's, how was it said? Impossible not wanting the depth of the lot being greater than twice its width? What's the reason for that?
Honestly, I could not tell you what the reason is for it. It's just part of the subdivision regulations.
So I've had discussions with the people that wrote the previous regulations, Bill Giordano and Marshall Butler, on that, on this specific question. And the reason why was they didn't want people going in and configuring lots that were really, that would fit a house up front, but then get really narrow in the back. So they'd meet their acreage qualifications and such. They didn't want these screwy lots. I don't know if you guys know what Maytag Ranch is. They're really narrow lots that run for miles, just so they could get their eight, their thirty-five acres. And they're just really screwy. And they tried to avoid that with this. So, you know, it's just trying to keep people from doing something stupid. We're not trying to do anything stupid with this, you know. To everyone on our side, it makes sense, so.
I just thought maybe there was some legal or safety reason the lot couldn't be that shape.
No.
Yeah, no, like Matt said, it's just trying to keep it to where there's enough usable land. And it, you know, if it narrows out too much, the, the one ranch that he referenced, Maytag, there could be setback issues and all sorts of stuff that, while they meet their acreage, it would be hard for them to do much past their building envelope. So this is just to try and keep usable property for folks.
But this lot will conform to everything else. We can build anywhere on it. There's no setback issues. There's nothing like that.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. Is this property proposed to be annexed by the Canyon City?
Not at this time. I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
I think the last thing the city wants is the annex roads that they have to take care of, so I don't think they'll be looking at that.
Yes. So to be honest with you, I don't think we've given, given a very good reason for denying the lot being more than twice, other than the concern about irregularity on the backside of it. And if that's the only concern, then we ought to revise the zoning to explicitly state that, that it won't be irregular. Otherwise, I'm having trouble saying why we should force him to make it short, smaller.
So the subdivision regulations are going to be next up for our department to rewrite. So that, that is going to be looked at moving forward in the future. For now, the regulations that we have in front of us are, shall not exceed that. I think it says where possible, so.
I understand.
Yeah.
So unless you all have something to offer, I mean, if, if the irregularity is the issue, we ought to be able to solve that in revising the zoning regulations.
Mm-hmm.
That's all.
I don't think the irregularity is necessarily an issue for me, but I think that what I, what I kind of have issues is we just saw this, what, a year ago, two years ago?
Probably a year ago.
A year ago.
And part of that issue was you didn't want to extend the water main to front the whole property, which would give you a straight. I mean, there was a, a kind of a big to-do about that. So you wanted to not extend the water main and have it served right here. And now you're coming back before us, want to change up the lot because of the water service. So I guess, I guess I have a little bit of issue with that. I think I would rather would see, you know, the easement. We had some back and forth in the water department, whether we would require, even with the meter pit anyways, but since you guys had just put it in, we decided not to, and, you know, we'd be fine with it right away. But I guess that's where I have a little bit more of an issue, is that we just approved this subdivision, this minor, two years ago, and now it's being adjusted due to something you were asking for. You know, but.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest thing on the sale of this was the three acres. You know, we could meet the width by having it two acres. But these people really want the three acres to keep in the agricultural atmosphere of the whole neighborhood, just like everything else is out there. And so that's why, that's why it's come before you.
Any other questions or comments?
The, I would say that I'm familiar a little bit with Indiana. I have a son that purchased quite a few acres out there, twenty, twenty-five, something like that. His lot is similar to this, where it is pretty long and not very wide. And he has actually a restriction on that lot. And it's a driveway issue that with the house that he, that, that exists on the property, the driveway exists for that house, but there's really no room for another driveway. And, and so he has a, he has a, I'm not really sure, but it's a restriction of some kind, whether it's a deed restriction or a note on the platte or something like that, 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 that property can't be further subdivided to create another house. And so, you know, the, from, from my perspective, I, I, although as an enforcer of the rules, our rules are certainly important and and necessary for, for us to have an orderly society. Nonetheless, I, I feel that, you know, private property has, comes with some rights of its own and the ability to use it as you'd like. In this case, what is the width of the, of the, of the, of the lot? Not the length, but the width.
It is one hundred and ninety-one point seven six.
Hundred and ninety-one.
The minimum lot width for this zone district would be a hundred feet.
A hundred feet.
It's double the minimum width, almost.
Gotcha. The, so the irregular lots are certainly a legitimate area of concern for, for us and, and our regulations. But, but taking into account what I've said, that might be something that we want, may want to look in our future revisions, that if lots get so narrow that multiple driveways, two driveways are not possible, that, that there may be some restriction in place there. I do know that, that the commissioners have, have looked at other issues where regulations may be changing, and they have been in favor of, of holding in abeyance the, some of the, some of the regulations while things are sorted out. Nonetheless, I would hate for us to get ahead of the game here and approve some non-conforming use or condition with the property that, that later still might exist. So it's, it's, for me, it's kind of a close call, but, but the, my feeling is, is that, is that if there's absent some other reason, then then just to rule against the width versus length, this, this sounds like a, something that could, could achieve our approval. Any other comments from the, from the commission? Okay, so we have in front of us LLA 23-009, and I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Lot, or LLA 23-009 Canyon Farms.
Second.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, John. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rudele, you want to start us off?
About yes.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And now we move to proposed regular, regulations of rewriting. And Dan, are you going to lead us through that?
I hope you gentlemen are ready for a marathon. Yep, so the first chapter that we would be working on would be the rewrite of Chapter 3, Regulations. So the planning and zoning, Planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has removed general from the title, added new regulations, and revised existing regulations of Chapter 3. We have also changed the format to match the format of the new Fremont County zoning resolution. Strike-throughs will show what's been removed and yellow highlights will show what's new. So as we flip through this, let me see here. One newer thing that we added was fencing regulations. We had had a bunch of concerns coming up specifically when it involved coming up to an intersection and fences blocking sightlines. And we currently do not have any fencing regulations. The building department has standards that one engineering would be required, but planning zoning has nothing. So we popped in some regulations for fencing, and there's follows. So it would be contacting the Fremont County Building Department for fencing requirements, for fencing that exceeds seven, or is seven feet or greater in height. Setbacks shall not apply to fencing. All corner lots adjacent to roadways shall follow these regulations. Solid fences or fences that are less than, or fences that are less than fifty percent open shall not exceed forty inches in height within fifty feet of the corners of the, when adjacent to roadways of the property. Fences that are fifty percent or more open shall not exceed forty-eight inches in height within fifty feet of the corners of adjacent, from the corners adjacent to the roadways of the property. And this setback does not include agricultural fences such as barbed wire, barbless wire, woven field fence, hog panels, continuous pipe fence, or corral panels. Any verification needed for compliance to fencing, please contact Planning and Zoning Department. So this won't affect anything to do with agriculture, which is huge for our county. And it's, the more solid it is, the, the shorter it's got to be to hopefully improve sightlines so we don't, aren't creating dangerous situations where people are creeping out into intersections. So that was the intent behind this.
I got a question on that one.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on. So is the intent that Section D applies to Sections A, B, and C? Neither, none of those sections apply if the fences, those constructions, height setbacks?
Yep. So if it's one of those agricultural fences where we're talking, you know, a couple strand barbed wire, pretty clear piping, all that stuff, if it's an agricultural fence, it does not apply. But if it's some sort of decorative fence, depending on its level of solidness, for lack of a better word, then, then these regulations would apply.
Yeah, I would, I would just suggest then, instead of this does not apply, Sections A, A, B, and C do not apply.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Sounds good. We can make that revision. All right.
While we're, while we're on this section, Dan, the fencing has come before city council several times. And the Planning Department and Planning and Zoning staff have recommended that the city have fences no more than six feet in height. And, and that creates a problem if you're in kind of one of the agricultural areas of the city with deer. Because if you've got a backyard garden, a six-foot fence isn't going to keep the deer out. And that, and so there was, it's kind of an arbitrary rule that no more than six in the city. And, and in certain areas, that, that makes a lot of sense. But where you've got open fields that are inhabited by deer and, you know, tasty, you know, veggies on the inside of your fence, six feet doesn't make a lot of sense. So I, this is, I like this particular provision that it's, that you can do, it's kind of a use by right if it's less than seven or one of the others, you know, as long as you meet the setbacks from the corners, essentially, if I understand that correctly. But there is, there, it can be up, you're given as, as the Planning and Zoning Department discretion for approving fences higher than that.
Yeah, so it, we were trying, again, we're not trying to overregulate by any means, but we just know that we've been getting complaints that it was creating dangerous situations. So we were trying to balance that, you know, so setbacks don't apply to it. Doesn't apply to agriculture. It doesn't require a permit with us. And it may require a permit with the building department depending on height. So we, we tried to be as lenient as we could while still having some parameters.
Great. Thank you.
All right. So moving on, you'll see that the manufactured home storage permit is, has strike-throughs?
Sorry, can I, can I ask one more question on that, just based on what you just said? So as far as the building department goes, do they require a permit for anything above seven feet, no matter, no matter the construction?
Yeah. Yeah, so fifty percent, at fifty percent solid or more,
Yep.
they require, seven feet of height, fifty percent, they require permit, or engineering.
Okay.
So they have requirements, so. I was, hopefully that read clearly, that if it's that high, they'd have to go down and talk to the.
Yeah, I guess then maybe Section D should not apply to that, because if their requirements are, you know, seven feet or more, anything, then, you know, it should be, it should align with that, right? So even if it's barbed wire or hog wire, whatever it may be.
So that would be, depending on how much somebody put on the fence, to make it fifty percent or more solid.
Okay.
So even if it was seven-foot-tall T-post, or seven-foot-one T-posts, and it was so many strands, it's still so much percentage clear.
Gotcha, so they don't need a permit.
That would not apply.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. So the next thing we would have up would be manufactured home storage. Currently, the Planning and Zoning Department allows somebody to get a storage permit that would be valid for six months to store a manufactured home on their property. And we allow for a one-time renewal. And then that is it. It either has to go or it has to be set. Unfortunately, what, what we've had a, a lot of experience with is somebody will get that storage permit to get permission to bring it there. And then they, they run out of money and they can't afford to remove it. They can't afford to set it. And it sits there and it's out of compliance and it turns into a code complaint. And then it turns into eventually us either code or code to the point of the county attorney chasing people to remove these things. So what we're proposing to do is to remove the ability to have a manufactured home storage permit. And if you want to bring a manufactured home to your property, have a building permit so you can set it. So we're hoping that would be a step that would alleviate these things, getting to a place because somebody found it real cheap and then it's sitting there to rot until it falls apart. And unfortunately, that's what we see a lot of. Most people that are ready to set and ready to build and ready to go, just get a permit, bring them there, it gets set, and the whole process moves along. But we, we found a real flaw with this regulation and it creating a lot of chasing after folks and, and stuff like that. So we're, we're proposing to remove that ability from our regulations. With storage structures, the only modification we have there is the new residential one, two, three zone districts. We, we did a little house cleaning with what the new districts are going to be there, that low-density, because medium-density went up to high-density with the consolidation. So we, we kind of did some cleanup there with the zone districts. With the setback clarifications, a lot of places specifically like Florida, Colorado acres, there's, there's easements that go through there. But what the practice is, since that's an easement for travel, is the setback starts at the edge of the easement. So we put that in writing to, to clarify that, because if not, you're having, you would have the ability to have the house almost directly in the easement, just off the edge of it. So we clarified that a little bit. The height measurement methods. What is it? The height shall be measured from grade to the top of the structure. And for structures with sloping grades, it's the average of the grade. So we kind of clarified how we measure homes for total height. Trailer and tent camping. We, we put in the new zone districts and we clarified that it's, the trailer and tent camping, the time limits are per year. That's always been the practice that we've had. But when we looked at the regs, we realized that it wasn't clear enough. So we have per year in there, and then we made this table to really make it super clear for folks and really easy to read. The human habitation in our regs now, it, you know, it speaks about no truck, tractor-trailer, bus, automobile, et cetera, or storage container shall be used for human habitation. But if you pay enough for engineering, and get an engineer to certify it and build it to that standard, you can. So we kind of clarified that with, unless permitted by the Fremont County Building Department for habitation, and one of their requirements would be engineering. So there is a pathway, so we, our regs should reflect that. So there is a pathway, so we, our reg should reflect that. On 311, we listed residential zones and took out the individual zones, and then added, instead of specifically saying as a home occupation, we, we referenced permitting by the county. And then permitted dwelling units, we, we kind of simplified that and cleaned that one up. And same thing with the yard and garage sales. Our regs said that more than three a year at a certain location constitute a business, but a business constitutes permitting, so we, we just cleaned that up and made it a little clearer for folks. And then the last page, we referenced a new section, and that is it for the regulations.
I do have a question going back to 3.3.
Yes, sir.
We're deleting carports and decks, some rules about carports and decks.
So our regulations already state where the measurements start from. So we kind of don't know why it specifically spoke about individual types of, decks are part of the structure, a carport is a structure, our regs are pretty clear where the setbacks start, so we kind of found that to be a little bit redundant.
Great. Thanks. Thanks for that.
Yep.
Any, any, any questions or comments on, on Section 3?
Yeah, I had one on trailer or tent camping. So does that apply for like short-term rentals, for tent camping as well? Like the, I forget what the, what the website is called or what the practice is called, but now in essence Airbnb for camping?
Yep, so HipCamp.
Thank you.
Yep, so right now, we don't allow Airbnb, Airbnb of tent sites, and we haven't fit HipCamp into the regulations, we're still trying to see if that's a fit for us. So this is for personal. This isn't, you can throw up a camp, a tent on your site and rent it out 14 days or 90 days out of the year. This references personal camping.
Cool. Thank you.
Then, as we, I have a process question here, as we go through these proposed rewrites, do we need to take a vote on each one, or?
I think it might be easier if we just vote on them individually, and that way we don't have one massive resolution at the very end.
Okay.
Farther down the way.
So we.
This would, so sorry, my, the goal for this, if, if approved with whatever revisions you guys recommend, would be for an April adoption in 2024. So this April.
Okay. With that, then I'm open to a motion concerning the rewrite of Chapter 3 regulations, and the, the motion should state that, that either the, the commission either approves or disapproves or whatever language of individual commissioner would like to have in, in specifically regards to Chapter 3.
Yes, sir, and to include that I will make the recommended revision to the fencing section.
Okay.
And one more process question. So the April adoption, will we see that one more time?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So.
Unfortunately, the reason why you guys are swamped right now is we're trying to get the last bit of the regulations in front of you, so we have enough time to get it in front of the BOCC. And then, once we get the green light on everything, we have been taking notes and suggestions of changes on things that have already been approved. Then we're going to bring back the entire zoning resolution compiled together with the recommended fixes, and present it to you one last time before April. What's that? Yeah, so hopefully in March, if not the very beginning of April, but hopefully in March, we are going to present it as one completed document to you for one final decision.
And that will be our final action on the, on the proposed changes, and then from there it goes to the commissioners, is that correct?
Then it goes to the commissioners, and then it's, then it's our new regs.
Okay. All right, so I'm open to a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the rewrite, rewrite, right, the Chapter 3 regulations as presented.
Some motion include with recommended changes.
Okay, yeah, good idea. With recommended changes and rewrite.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Will you want to start us off?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now we move to the rewrite of Chapter 1.
And again, hello, everyone. So here's, the Planning and Zoning Department has recognized the need for the review and update to the regulations. Staff has removed general from, general from the title, added new definitions, and revised existing definitions. We have also changed the format to match the new format of the zoning resolution. Strike-throughs will show what we're proposing to be removed, highlights will show new additions, and the proposed timeline, the proposed rewrite, if viewed as favorable, will have an adoption date of April 2024. If any substantial changes are made to this draft, these sections will be presented to this commission for further recommendations. So we started by looking through our regulations and seeing all of the things that we referenced that we actually didn't define. So that was our kind of jumping off point for making additions to the definitions. We had a lot of things in our regs that we referenced, and it just, there was no definition of it. That being said, we added definitions to, that, from current uses, and, and we kind of scoured other zoning regs and to see what is current topics, current things happening in other counties, and tried to add some of those definitions into our, our regulations. So one of the things we made a change to was the definition of adult uses. It was, we noticed there were spelling errors, and there was, it was a touch outdated, so we looked to see what a couple other counties were using, and we found one of those that we think was a little more timely, and we added that one in. So we, we think we have it better defined now. So that was one of them. Made a revision to agricultural buildings, agricultural sales. We popped in agretainment, which is a newer issue that we've had coming up, so that was a new use we popped in. We added in definition for air bed and breakfast. We took the original animal unit table, or, I won't call that a table, we, we made a, we made a bit of a table, so it's a little easier to read our, our animal units, and did a little bit of readjusting. The one thing we did is, we now reference the different types of animal by category, and you're allowed three animal units per acre. In different animals, the different numbers of animals count as a different animal unit. So the smaller they are, the more you can have to count as one animal unit. But one of the issues we had was, an animal wasn't considered, wasn't counted until it was a year of age. So in the world of, say, hogs, sheep, and goats, most of those critters are in the freezer before they'd be considered an animal unit. So it was kind of a little gray area that we had, that while somebody, let's say they had an acre and could only have, say, six swine, they could almost have an unlimited number of swine, as long as they weren't a year of age or older. So what we wound up doing is we referenced that offspring for category one and the like will not count against the number of permitted animal units for a period of time not to exceed one year, all other categories not to exceed six months. So since the smaller animals grow quicker, they count as an animal a little bit quicker. That was one of the revisions that we changed. And then we popped in there that the Planning and Zoning Director may determine the number of animal units on a case-by-case basis for animals that aren't listed. And basically, I'd be looking at size for size. So we, we kind of cleaned that up a little bit and made a table to go with it, so hopefully it's a little easier to read. As we go through this one, we define bottoming plant, brewery, let's see, we got temporary building, car rental and storage, Christmas tree cutting and sales, commercial development plan, commercial firewood cutting sales, construction office. Most of these that are defined are uses that we had in our regulations with no definition. So it made us really hard to kind of regulate. Crematory, distillery, dry cleaning, accessory dwelling unit. In here, manufactured home, we cleaned up manufactured home to match what our regulations currently say. Yep, and then, let's see, one of the things we did is there, we had a moratorium on single whites, and the more we looked at it, there is no reason to regulate a single white's different than an, a dwelling, because a single white is a dwelling. So to address the single wide moratorium that has been in place, we now define a single white as a dwelling, and it can go anywhere a dwelling can, providing it meets the requirements. So that was one of the issues that we did, or one of the things we did to help address the moratorium that's been in place. Let's see, emergency service station we added, exercise facility we added, farm ranch supplies and sales. So farm and ranch headquarters, we reference it as a single-family dwelling unit, not, it was previously referenced as a manufactured home or manufactured home single-wide, since every type of dwelling is now under the umbrella of a dwelling, we reference it correctly. Forestry sales, ground transportation facilities, heavy equipment and commercial truck repair, heliport, home occupation, motel. We added some to the definition of junk, and so we kind of hopefully made that more We have machine shop, manufactured home sales lot, manufactured home repair, remodeling and refurbishing, or dismantling, medical clinic, meat locker, a memorial park, post office and printing industrial, property sales office, rafting, believe it or not, we didn't have a definition for rafting. Retail sales store, we listed multiple, all the different types of retail sales stores, different types of schools, rather than having them each listed out individually, small engine repair shop, solar panel field, special mobile machinery, which is one of the things that code enforcement enforces for the county, all the, making sure all the heavy equipment is permitted, but we didn't have a definition of it. We have temporary use, tent, train terminal, a tower co-locate, travel trailer park, upholstery services, utility distribution, distribution elements, utilities, buildings, main lines, regulators, substations, energy storage, and transmission lines. We tried to clean up and simplify the definition of a vehicle. I know that came up recently on an application, what counts as a vehicle, what's SMM? So we, we tried to make sure that we had those definitions in there, so we wouldn't have those issues moving forward. Wholesale, wholesale sales, storage, a winery, and that's it for this section. So we tried to add newer items, make a couple of those definitions more clear, and, and just give it a general update.
Questions from the commissioners?
On the agricultural building, at the end of the paragraph, you describe agricultural implements, farm products, livestock poultry, and shall not contain mixed uses. What's a mixed use? Are you talking about having a barn and storing equipment in it? A barn that you have livestock in? I think that's kind of vague.
That is somewhat vague. So on this one, we tried to go off the, the Building Department. So if you have agricultural, you have to, in order to have an agricultural building in the county now, you just can't go put one up. You need to apply for a permit through the Building Department.
Since when? Regulations don't require it?
Two years ago?
No, they still don't require a permit.
They do.
They require a review for setbacks, but not for permits.
So you have to, you have to, if I'm not mistaken, you have to apply for a permit through the Building Department with no fee. They have to, you have to prove to them what will the building be used for to make sure that it's eligible for agricultural. So if it meets their criteria to be eligible as an agricultural building, they do a review process on it with no permit, and then you're allowed to build the structure. Prior to the Building Department changing their regulations to, to meet that, anyone could just build a building and say it was agriculture, and then if it didn't meet the definition, the structure was already up, and the Building Department was having issues. So Building Department does, now does a permit, they do a review with no fee, but you have to prove to them what's going to go in.
Well, according to the standards that I read, all they review it for is setbacks.
It, it's what's going to go inside of it, and that's why it references that mixed use. So if you are going to put.
Well, see, that's what's confusing to me, is because in the standards that I read, it doesn't say there's a difference between a barn, and in fact, they specify that you can have a, a shop, an agricultural shop for repair of equipment. That's why I'm asking about the mixed use, because you could have a, you could have a barn with a shop in the corner of it for repairing, you know, equipment.
Hi, sorry. So the mixed use with going through the Building Department, what that is, is so you've got your shop, you've got your ag building, you've got, that's still classified, it's a utility building through the Building Department. When we talk about mixed uses, we're talking about like a dwelling, an office, a shop, they're different classifications.
A living space.
Yes, so like.
Well, then I think you need to spell it out here and say no living space.
Yeah, and we can do that.
Okay, that would make more sense to me.
Yeah, so with, like with a shop, they're normally not rated to hang drywall on the ceiling, so that's where those different categories come from, and that's why we're the mixed use, but we could definitely clarify that more, so it's a little bit easier to understand that if it's an ag building, it's only an ag building, it's not going to turn into an office or anything else later down the road.
Okay, well, then, then I think that needs to be spelled out, because to me, the mixed uses is pretty vague.
Okay.
I mean, the problem is, who determines that? The building owner or, or some, some building official that wanders through five years down the road?
And, and it's typically the building official or later on when the assessor comes here.
Yeah, and that's where I have an issue, because, because, you know, if you're, if you're trying to do things right, and, and you have some guy that comes in and says, well, you didn't do this like it was supposed to be done.
Yep, and, and that's why, why it started instituting that there's, there's the review in their office to make sure that they, from the start, the use was correct, and then if somebody modified it after the fact, then, then that's on the homeowner. I know from having them do reviews on other projects we've had, the gentleman put something up as an agricultural building, but was now storing his collector cars in there, and collector's cars aren't agriculture. So he had changed the use of that building, whereas if he wanted a building to house his cars, that should have required permitting that would have actually had a fee and, and other such, so it was presented as one thing but being used as another. But that, that's more of a Building Department issue, but we can absolutely clarify what the mixed use would be, so it's clear in our regulations.
Okay.
The, if, if I could weigh in on that just a little bit, so essentially, zoning regulations create zones with certain uses that are use by right or special review use within the zone. Okay? If, so the, the uses are specified, for instance, animal husbandry is a use, vehicle maintenance is a use. When you have mixed usage, usages, you have both of those activities going on in the same place. So that's what mixed usage refers to. It's a, it's a construct of the, as I understand it, of the zoning regulations defining uses by right and uses that require special review use. So that's my two cents on that.
Well, I think my, my concern is that it's, there's a distinction between having a commercial building and having an agricultural use, and, and a barn is a barn, okay? But if I need a shop in the corner of it to repair a sicklebar, a mowing, you know, that's, that's an approved, that should be an approved use.
Yeah, so as long as the use of a, a building that's declared an agricultural building is for agricultural purposes, that would all be that same use, but it would be if you had half your barn's a barn, and the other half you turn into your home office, or you turn it into your collector car shop, or you turn it into something that's non-farm related, then you have now mixed your uses. So that's what that's trying to reference.
So how are you going to handle some, some applicant that comes in and wants to do a barnamenium?
That's a home, and they'd have to pay for a dwelling permit. I know when I put up my shop building, I knew it wouldn't necessarily be an agricultural-only use. I know when I put up my shop building, I knew it wouldn't necessarily be an agricultural only use. So I paid the permit fee, and then I can use it for whatever I want. But if you want a free permit to put up an agricultural building, you can't put it up and then change the use inside of it and get around the permit fee. And that's kind of some of the stuff that was happening.
Okay. I have one other question for you. I think we kind of still opened up this can of worms at the last meeting when we tried to just, tried to discuss contractor yards and what kind of vehicles can be stored in there. I think we're going to have a real problem here with the special mobile machinery, SMM. I don't know how you would, how you would define that type of equipment. Is every, is every piece of machinery on a farm or a construction yard going to have to have an SMM tag on it?
So if it's for agricultural use, such as tractors, or say you have a, a big ranch and you need a backhoe for your ranch, or you, if you have machinery that is used for agricultural purposes, it is exempt from SMM. But if you have equipment that you're being hired, it's leaving the property, and you're being hired to use it, that requires SMM. So, and SMM is, you can either put it on your tax roll, or you could pay for an SMM sticker and register it yearly. With that, with the definition of SMM, if you're driving down the highway and a state trooper pulls you over and you have invalid SMM on your equipment that's on a trailer, you're not allowed to move your trailer until you have valid SMM. You are dead right there. They can give you a ticket for moving your skid steer that you're being hired out to use. But if you have a skid steer for your own farm and ranch, that is not SMM. So, SMM, for agricultural purposes, SMM, your equipment is not SMM. But if, if this is stuff that's leaving your lot, that you're being subbed out for, that is SMM. And it's a, it has to be registered with the DMV, or on your taxes with the assessor, and you can be pulled over by state troopers for having invalid SMM and ticketed. So it's, so our, our regulations try to match what the, the DMV regulations are for what's considered SMM. And part of the planning and zoning office's responsibilities is code enforcement actually checks SMM every time we go out to sites. And we have the ability to stop when we see a construction site and check to see if they have current SMM, and inform them that they have to get their stuff registered.
Okay, so let me give you a scenario. We live in the Rocky Mountains, there's a lot of rocks around here. You've got a rock grizzly, and you've got a vibrator on it to give it, you know, some shake. And you've got an air compressor sitting there to, to provide air for it. Do both pieces of equipment have to have an SMM tag on it?
Is it mounted to the trailer?
Well, it could be either or. I could put the, I could put the air compressor on a truck and haul it to a job, or I could tow it behind.
So if it's-
To me, it's irrelevant, because it's, it's, it's a piece of machinery, okay? Here's what I'm getting at. What happens if, if a pipeline contractor has, has a, a jumping jack to compact a trench over a water line? Does he have to have an SMM tag on that too? See, this is the can of worms I'm seeing getting opened up here. And, and we've got people going out looking at, I, I noticed in one of these applications that, that one of your inspectors saw a piece of equipment that didn't have an SMM tag on it on a piece of property. And, and the gentleman said, well, I'll have it moved by the time, whatever, but, but see, I, this is the can of worms I'm, I'm concerned that we're opening up here. I think you're going to create a whole lot of headaches for yourself.
It, it's already a headache we have. It's a headache that the planning and zoning department, I mean, if you walk up to our door, you'll see SMM on our door. It's something the planning and zoning has been responsible for, for quite some time. The, the clerk, on a semi-annual basis, will actually send up the sheet of all the expired SMM within the county to the code enforcement office, so they could reach out to the various people who have had SMM that has expired, to remind them that they're expired, or to see if they have sold their equipment. It's something we're already tasked with and have been doing. It's not something that we're trying to start.
I, I guess I keep coming back to this idea of affordable housing. How in the world is this going to happen when you've got, when you've got contractors that don't even know what kind of equipment has to have the proper tags on it to get it to and from a job, from their, from their yard?
And most contractors are fairly aware of what's needed. And like I said, they, it's not only countywide. Law enforcement has the ability to, to do a stop and check them as they're driving down the road, a piece of equipment, to see. So, it's not Fremont County specific, it is statewide, that this is a requirement on construction equipment.
So I think that, I think the, the, the issue that you're kind of talking about here is, is there's machinery like an air compressor that can be put in the back of a pickup truck, that you can incidentally haul over the highways to perform some function at a job site. And the question I think you're asking is that special mobile machinery.
Well, I, it just seems to me like you're, the definition here for, for what SMM is, is very vague. It could be all-inclusive to just about anything, including a shovel in the back of a pickup truck.
And, and, as the planning coordinator pointed out to me, our definition is straight out of state statute. So that, we pulled that from the state and used their exact definition.
Doesn't mean that's right either, does it?
Means, means we're covered, so.
Yeah, means we're covered. CYA.
It, it, since it's something that we've been tasked and for enforcing for so long, we, we felt that we should have the definition for it, and the, the best definition we had was the one provided by the state. So since it's something that we're already tasked with doing, we felt that we should be covered by explaining it.
Okay.
Other comments on our definition section?
I've got a few.
Travis?
Yep, page six, Airbnb. I just want to make sure that's going to capture those air, bed and breakfasts that just rent out single rooms. Are those allowed in the county?
So, a bed and breakfast is different than an Airbnb.
Okay.
So we have a definition of bed, uh, bed and breakfast, which requires an SRU.
Right.
So if you live in the home and you're renting out rooms, bed and breakfast. If you're renting out your entire home, Airbnb.
Perfect.
So, and we, at this time, we do not permit anything to do with Airbnb.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay. Page ten, just a question, that temporary building, what, what would that be? What, what is a, a building that a single person can move? I mean, are we talking tents? What are we talking here?
It's not much, sir.
Yeah, okay, I was just wondering what, what actually falls underneath that?
A lot of people reference that what they have is temporary.
Oh, what, I'm sorry?
A lot of people will reference the structure they have as temporary.
Okay.
So, all the time specifically, like, most often in code enforcement.
Okay.
You'd show up and it, it's a structure that clearly would require a permit, that this thing's not movable. And you'd have a conversation with that guy, oh, it's temporary. So we, we didn't have a definition of what temporary would be, so.
So I guess the question then begs, if we're defining temporary as something that really doesn't exist, we would just not have temporary?
We could remove it.
Yeah, I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
We were trying to cover all our bases.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's stuff that always comes up repeating to us, that people are always referencing, so we were trying to see if we can get a definition to-
Sure, and it's probably potato, potato, you know?
So, we can, we can ask that one.
All right, Paige, sorry, give me one second. Should have made more detailed notes for myself.
Trying to find it.
Oh, the car rental and storage area. Should that be just rental and not storage? Since the, the definition says available to rent for periods of time? If you're storing cars, if you have car storage, I mean, I don't think the definition should, should be, you know, available to rent.
What was that one again, one more time?
Car rental on page ten, car rental and storage area. So you have car rental, but it's company that has an inventory of vehicles onsite available to rent for periods of time. So if you're just, have a storage facility, that you're storing people's cars, RVs, things of that nature, you know, they're not available for rent, so it just, should those be separated out?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. On page eleven, construction office. Just wondering if that should be a temporary structure, although we, we define temporary as something a little bit different, but you know, a construction office usually being a temporary structure, not gonna, not gonna stay on the, on the, on the site. If we're saying just a structure erected on a building development site to be used for administrative purposes, that could just be an office. You know, that stays.
Yeah, we can, we can absolutely clean that one up.
Okay. Page fifteen, farm and ranch hand quarters.
Yes, sir.
Does it have to be single family? Just envisioning that maybe a larger ranch might have multi. You know, if they had a, if they had a building to, to house multiple ranch hands with a single bathroom, then you have something that's, that's not just a single family. So I don't, I don't know what you would change it to, I mean, I'm open to, to suggestions on that. I just don't know whether it should be defined as simply a single family, so you only have, you know, one structure for one family or one person, or-
I absolutely see what you're saying, I, I hesitate in wanting to have it be multi.
Sure.
But maybe, like a, what's that? Yeah, because multi isn't allowed in that district.
Understood.
Maybe something, bunkhouse? Which we used to refer, did we, no. We'll, we'll find something that could accommodate everything-
Yeah, and if nothing, then fine, I just wanted to, to broach the subject. Page twenty-six, roadside stand. My only question would be, why, why should it have to be produced onsite? You know, I think there were some, some roadside stands in Florence where they just have a roadside stand, that they would move for a more visible area that's not attached to their lot.
And, and, that one's kind of tricky, the way they're, I believe, do you have that one up? So, the standard practice that has been in the department was it was always for what you grow onsite, so you're not bringing stuff in. Our concern would be that, since roadside stands are a use by right in a lot of areas, if, if we expand it to where you could start bringing in all of your goods, we have no way to scale that, we have no way to check the ability of parking, we, it's, while most people are probably going to keep it small, it's also something that if it's, if they could bring in goods, it can probably get fairly sizable. So, since the practice had always been that it was for what you grow on your site, or we, we just clarified that.
Okay.
But if that's something you want us to look into.
Past practice, that's just been kind of clarified?
It was more of a past practice thing. Again, most people would probably keep it small, but that's a great way to have something pop up that could be pretty large and maybe impactful.
Sure.
Parking, that we would have no oversight on.
Okey dokey. That's it for me.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions or comments? I do, I do have one. One of the issues that's come be, in front of the Board of County Commissioners here lately is associated with the, with the solar panel field. And that is solar battery storage, okay? And, and the issue is, is that you can bring in these intermodal shipping containers that contain large batteries, designed to store solar energy during the day and then discharge at night. And the issue is, is that the batteries themselves, when they are no longer useful or, or are determined to be a waste, are a hazardous waste under the Resource Conservation Recovery Act rules, hazardous waste, RECA, rules. And the, and so, this is, this is a developing, this is a developing area of regulation. The, the issue is that at the end of their useful life, if there's not some type of financial instrument that has been provided for in the regulations that, to cover the cost of disposal, they could just end up being abandoned. And so that's creating a liability for the, for the adjacent property owners perhaps, or the property owner, or even the, the municipality or county that, where those batteries may reside. So I, I'd suggest that you look at, thinking about trying to get some regulations in place covering people who propose solar battery storage to ensure that there is a bond, some type of financial instrument that can be drawn upon at the termination of operations to, to dispose of those batteries. Of course, that'd be refundable once the batteries were disposed of by the owner or operator, whatever. But, but that's, that's something that we don't, we for sure don't want to end up with these orphaned batteries, you know, ten or fifteen years from now, when, when they may not, may no longer be useful.
Yes, sir. So, um, we, we've had a lot of inquiries about solar fields. And the solar fields are generally tied back to a grid without the batteries right there. We do have a project that we're working our way through now that is solely a battery project. The, the one safeguard we do have is both of those are subject to a special review use process. We are learning a lot about newer green energy, and we, we are doing our due diligence and trying to move cautiously to make sure that we're, the county's going to be covered. So, we're hopeful that through the SRU process, that's when we get to have, dig into the project more, have the asks, make sure there's bonding, make sure there, make sure everyone's covered along in the process. So, for this portion, this is just the definition of solar. And for battery storage, we had looked at that as a like use with the utility definition. So that's where we had grouped that one, we didn't come out and define that one just yet. But we're, we, we have green energy products in front of us, and we are, we are working through it.
Okay. That's, that's my suggestion, is that you look at some type of county regulation that, that requires a, a performance bond, refundable at the end of a project, to cover disposal of batteries. And that's, and so that's, that's what I'm suggesting is, that if you, if the county has such a regulation, then proposers of such projects know going into it what costs they may be looking at, as opposed to finding out in front of a SRU hearing in front of the county, in front of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Like I said, we're, we're learning a lot lately.
Okay. So, um, that's, that's just a suggestion that you look at that, and at, at some appropriate time. It doesn't necessarily have to be included in this one, but I'd be thinking about it and talking with your attorney, the county attorney, and, and seeing what may be possible, and what, what would be appropriate, and-
Yes, sir.
And, and that kind of case. Okay, so we've got, we, we now have our rewrite in front of us. Chapter one provisions, definitions and violations. Any further comments? Otherwise, I'm open to a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve chapter one with suggested revisions.
I'm afraid we're going to have to be a little more clear on suggested revisions than that for the motion, just so that you get it right. Because I heard a couple of very clear suggestions from you, Commissioner Payne. So, those with the suggested revisions being, number one, I know was to delete the definition of building temporary. So remove that, and then you made a couple of other specific suggestions, and I did not capture those unfortunately.
Understood. Okay, so, maybe just a fuzz more discussion on that then. I think with the car rental and storage, that should probably be a suggested revision, that you separate out those, that if we're going to define it as, to be used as rental, that it should just be car rental, and car storage should have its own definition. The temporary building, I, I, that can go away for sure, I was just curious about that.
Temporary building, delete that definition. Delete, delete the definition because it doesn't make sense to you.
I, I-
Temporary building, so it can be moved by one person without mechanicals.
Yeah, understood.
Delete that.
So I'd like to, I'd like to hear if any of the commissioners have an opinion on it. I, I understand the wisdom of defining it, so you can point to something and say, well, this is a temporary. You know, you don't let other people define it, because we have a definition. If you def, if you just delete it, then people are going to try that, try that angle, so I, I'm really open to either.
For me, a temporary building would be a tent.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I mean, exactly.
That's about the limit of my-
That'd be the limit, you know, we're talking to a strong man, we're talking, yeah, yeah, understood. So, again, I get both ways of doing it. So, again, I get both ways of doing it, and that just... Does anybody else have their druthers on it? Okay, I'm going to suggest we leave it.
So the motion includes only separating out car rental from rental facility?
Car rental from rental...
Car storage.
Yeah, car storage. Give me one second. Then we were going to look into the farm and ranch, whether there is a more appropriate than...
Than single-family definition.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's necessarily a suggested revision or whether it's just leave it unless you guys find a more appropriate definition.
We'll definitely take a look in that and see how we can word that to not violate what that zone allows, but allow for...
Yeah.
Maybe more. So we'll try to come up with something a little better than that.
Cool. And the roadside stand had nothing to do. So, yeah, I think the car rental and storage would be the only one. Thank you for...
And that amended motion, then?
So then there was also the clarified mixed-use in agricultural buildings. That was a suggestion. Yep, and for the construction office, add off-site after construction, to clarify for the construction office.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
So, I believe that's all of them.
Yep.
Did we capture everything, then?
Everybody like it? Well enough.
Okay, so we've got an amended motion, I believe, as stated. And so, did I get a second on that?
I will second that.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Rudy.
Aye.
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 Thank you. And now we're moving to request to delete the Neighborhood Business Zone District and rezone two properties. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. All right, so the Planning and Zoning Department has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff is proposing deletion of the Fremont County zoning regulations, section four, point one-two, NB, Neighborhood Business Zone District. The county has two properties in this district. The first property, located in Canyon City, has an approved non-conforming status for a single-family dwelling in the Neighborhood Business Zone District. The adjacent properties to the north, south, east, and west are zoned agricultural suburban. Planning and zoning is proposing to rezone this property to the Residential One District, which is currently agricultural suburban, so it would match the surrounding lots. The property meets all of the development requirements of that zone district. So, we're proposing to make that one match the neighborhood and get rid of the non-conforming status of it, just to be a single-family residential use. The second property is also located in Canyon City. This property holds an SRU for a convenience store. The adjacent properties, north, east, and west, are zoned industrial. The property's south is zoned agricultural suburban. The Planning and Zoning is proposing to rezone the property to the Business Zone District, where a convenience store is in allowed use and rescind the current SRU. This property is point zero-four of a mile south of the Business Zone District, so there is a zone district in proximity. And this would meet all of the criteria of the Business Zone District. So, out of the entire county, for whatever reason, we made a zone district for two lots. And both of them required special permitting to be doing what they're doing at those locations, which would be compatible if they were zoned correctly. So, we've reached out to... We've sent a letter to each one of the owners and made them aware of it. I believe the owner with the residential use has asked us what this is about. We explained it to them, and we've received no further feedback at all. So, we don't really see this zone district as being relevant. And we could make these properties match what they're doing a little better by changing their zones and removing this district. And that is it.
How about the second property owner?
No response.
Okay.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to delete the Neighborhood Business Zone District and rezone two properties. Any further discussion? Rudy?
Yes.
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 Aye.
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 Okay. And now we're moving on to the rewrite of section twenty-three, general requirements.
All right, so this is a little jump. This one actually addresses something in our subdivision regulations. So... Again, Planning and Zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. This addition is in reference to the required drainage plan and report. The proposal in front of you is a rewrite of the subdivision regulations, section XXIIII, the drainage plan and report. We had forwarded... The Fremont County engineer reviewed these regulations and made additional requirements, deletions, and recommendations to them. The intent of this rewrite is for the Fremont County subdivision regulations and the Fremont County zoning regulations to match. In the attached regulations, you'll see strike-throughs as well as yellow highlighting. Strike-through will detail deletion of the current regs and yellow details new verbiage and additional requirements. The proposed timeline of this, since it is in the subdivision regulations, would be for immediate adoption unless any substantial changes are requested, and then we'll come back to this commission. So, I'm going to try and stay on topic. Since our current Fremont County zoning resolution, when we detail a drainage plan, it refers somebody back to the subdivision regulations, and it doesn't stay within its own document. So, as part of that, we have... We had the engineer review all of this and make some additions and some clarifications and make... Kind of update our drainage regulations. So, the proposal after this will be for this same exact document for an April adoption into our zoning resolution. But this one would be for immediate adoption, and that way both of our regulations would match completely. So, in this, some clarifying language, some verbiage that's a little more detailed. So, it looks like there's a lot of new stuff, but it basically clarifies what is actually being reviewed when it's submitted to us and we forward it on to the engineer. So, we just gave it a facelift and kind of updated it a little bit more. So, I would be happy to answer any questions. And if you guys want any specs, our engineer is nice enough to be in the crowd.
I have a question, but I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you guys reached out to an outside engineering. Nothing against our inside. The reason I'm saying this is...
Well, it is inside. So it is our inside.
Well, I spoke with an outside that said that they had some input into it.
Okay.
Free Rocks.
Okay.
And I just wanted to commend you for also doing that. I know our inside knowledge is very important. Again, this is not saying anything about our inside, but it's just it's important to get outside engineering as well, people that are going to be representing, you know, homeowners to ask for these deferments and have to go to these drainages. So I'm just saying I'm glad you guys did that as well.
Yeah, so we've been trying. Drainage has been very contentious since I've been here. Not that I made it new, I just enforced it. And it's been a sticking point. Jay was good enough to hop in and look through it and basically add what he's looking for and kind of make it match, so that way whoever's designing the drainage plans can supply what we need rather than us having to kick it back to them and tell them that, you know, what we need after the fact.
Yeah.
So we just... We tried to give this an update. And so, this chapter that's in front of you would be for immediate adoption within the subdivision regulations. And then we'll move on to this exact same document for the zoning resolution, and that would be for the April adoption.
Got you. So I don't know if it was you that reached out to them, but kudos to you for doing that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we... As a whole, we've been trying to reach out to get input from other agencies that we work with often to see suggestions, so...
Yep.
But that's it, unless anyone's got any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Any further questions from the panel? That's the requirement to have a drainage plan has been something that we've struggled with as a board, as a commission. And does... Are you... Is it... You're understanding that these regulations further... Better specify when one is required and when it is not?
Yes, and it specifically talks about minor subdivisions and deferment and waiver requests. And it addresses, I think, a fair amount of what's relevant currently. So, we've been paying attention, and we've been trying to make adjustments.
Great. The... I would ask, it's good to get the engineering side of things in here to make sure that we've got the right terminology and requirements. Were you able to reach out to some of the proponents of actions where the drainage plan was requested to be deferred? To take a look at these and see what... Get any input from them?
So not in any of the subdivisions that have come through with deferments. I didn't get a chance to reach out to any of those folks. We... This entire process, there's been a lot of discussion, not only in front of you in the BOCC, but in my office. Concerns, people's thoughts, feelings. This is something we've spent a whole lot of time on, so we're trying to make it better. I feel this will make things more clear, and hopefully, moving forward in the future, it'll be better. You know, it specifically talks with the minor subdivisions, that the certain size... The size of the lots kind of trigger the need for the drainage a little bit more. So we think we've been listening, and we've got a substantially better product.
Okay. I myself would feel better. I'm not suggesting that we put a break on what the action in front of us is today, but for the sake of transparency, it would be really great if in the future, if we're dealing with an issue like this, to reach out to the people that have come before us with requests to get their input also.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
That was kind of my idea on this, too, is I just have to wonder... Some of these changes are fairly broad, and I'm wondering if you've had any kind of a cost analysis breakdown done on this. What's it going to cost, you know, per lot? I mean, we had a guy in here, you know, talking about roads the other day, and it was $25,000 a lot for what he wanted to do. I haven't heard any good comments about how much is it going to cost homeowners or landowners to do anything.
Generally, in Planning and Zoning, in here... Sorry, I'll start with this. In here, it actually talks about if the percentage of the amount that it would cost is... If it's over a certain percent, then it triggers something else. So, it's got a provision in here to where if that's something that's going to kill the project because it's too expensive, there's different language, and it gives an avenue, if you will. So, that is in these regulations, which we currently don't have, I don't believe. We generally do not take the applicant's cost into consideration with what they're trying to do. They're coming to us with the ask. And the cost could be wildly different depending on who's hired or the scale of the project. It'd be very hard for us to kind of get a grip on that. So, but there is language in here that does address... I believe if the cost is over 10% of the overall project, it triggers something different. So it does try to give some pathways if it gets too pricey.
Are you going to... Do you anticipate taking that same approach on roadways? That's a real expensive vitamin in Fremont County.
It really is. I wouldn't be able to really comment on that right now. I mean, when we get into our subdivision regulations that addresses roadways, that's when we're going to be able to take a deep look into it. Right now, with us doing our daily permits and then with the Fremont zoning resolution and then working with the affordable housing guys, I'd be lying if I said we weren't stretched then. It's... I have a copy of the subdivision regulations up on my desk, and I make notes in them as we come up with topics. I've been making notes in them for the last year. So when we get to those regulations, I have things highlighted to be addressing. And, you know, I would absolutely put something next to the roadways with costs.
Do you have the drainage situation highlighted for the affordable housing people, too? I mean, this really just drives up the cost of a building lot, is what we're talking about here.
So, and it does. So, we have the affordable housing suggestions in front of us at this time. The county commissioners are reviewing them and then going to be having a meeting with the affordable housing team. They're going to be formally presenting, once the county commissioners have some time to get familiar with what's being proposed. And then we're going to pick a pathway... They're going to pick a pathway to move forward with that. So the affordable housing team very well may request or recommend a drainage waiver if it's affordable. You know, I'm not sure how they're going to go about it, but they've done a full audit on our zoning resolution and our subdivision regulations, and they have probably close to 20 pages of... They probably have close to 20 pages of suggestions. So, it very well may be one of the things that they address.
Okay.
I guess I would have a comment on that. I mean, I'm all for affordable housing as well, but not to the detriment of having a properly planned project when it comes to drainage and roads. I think the roads, I mean, you're going to be paying for it one way or the other, right? I mean, it's either going to be up to the developer or it's going to be up to the county to spend the money, which is our taxes as well. I mean, it shouldn't be to the detriment of having less quality roads or not properly planned drainage. That would just be my...
My concern is that we have a really nice drainage plan, and we don't have a road in front.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I...
It has to be a comprehensive plan that provides an affordable solution.
It's... I can say it's something that we're working towards to make it all work together. But there's a lot of balls up in the air that we're all trying to keep going and orchestrate it and keep everything moving and have it all make sense. So, the... Off the top of my head, I could not say if the affordable housing team has suggested anything to do with deferring drainage if it's for affordable. I'm not sure off the top of my head. But with what we managed to get in front of you guys, we think it's a more clear document that offers some pathways.
The... I do have a specific comment on section 10.3, deferments and waiver requests, and perhaps a little discussion. But for instance, in the... One of the requests that was in front of us was a lot split with a drainage plan requirement that was asked to be waived, if I remember correctly. And the issue was that they didn't want to spend the money on the drainage plan until time of construction of the second structure, if I remember correctly. And as I read the deferment and waiver request section, it says that it can be waived where the change in use does not increase the imperviousness of the site. And that would be... Is that... That would cover that situation, would it not, or not?
So, are you looking at 10.3C where it doesn't change the impervious by 5%?
No.
Nope, okay.
10.1...
Yep, where it does not... Yeah, so where it does not change... Where it does not increase the imperviousness of the site. So, yeah, so if it's... If the change that's in front of us is not proposing any changes, then yes, that would be one of the criteria to allow for a deferment or a waiver request.
Allow for a deferment. And in that section, what I would recommend is the intent is not... The intent is that A, B, C, and D are standalone requirements, are independent... Excuse me, I'm saying that incorrectly. So when you have a list like that, you can require that all of the conditions be met to be able to grant a deferment, or any of the conditions would allow you to grant. And so I would rec... And I think that's the intent there, that any of those conditions would allow the request for deferment. would allow the request for, uh, deferment of the drainage report. And so it probably should say or after each, uh, bullet point.
Okay.
Can I say something clarified?
Sure. Please do.
Um, Jay, the county engineer, and I, I did a lot of that rewrites with, uh, you know, talked with, uh, some other engineers, looking at the, uh, previous, um, regulation, regulations and suggestions. I looked at, uh, the city of Pueblo, you know, not that they know everything at all, you know, just trying to get some things, and Weld County, Chafie County, um, just trying to look at the best, but keep it, you know, simple too. And one of the things that I was bothered by in the regulations was deferment and waiver. And I understood and, and the intent, uh, in this is that a waiver would be a, a total, um, not, um, no need for a drainage plan. The deferment is still there, uh, for commercial until the full development of the, of the property. So, um, and another thing I wanted to mention, I, for as far as cost, that would, I think it actually will, um, lower the cost because the, uh, the, the engineers won't have to, uh, you know, create as many drainage plans where it's not necessary for, uh, larger lots with small proposed increases in imperviousness, or any lot, really, any residential lot that has no increase in imperviousness, the drainage, uh, that, the, uh, the peak flow off of that site will not increase. I mean, there's just, they almost don't have to have that line in there, but if, if the development or change does not increase the peak flow, then there is no need, there's no way really of creating a drainage plan and no need to, uh, have an engineer look at it. Uh, we can, I don't know exactly how that gets evaluated, but, um, you know, if it's a, uh, two acres or less, uh, I think it's a criteria of percentage, and, uh, if it's a large lot, um, it's not, you know, I guess four and a half acres or above. Uh, that was one of Three Rocks' recommendations as well. And, and it is in, um, I think Weld County's as, as well, that a larger residential lot almost can't, um, cause a drainage problem unless they, you know, put a, you know, huge parking lot or something on it that isn't allowed anyway. So, anyway, just wanted to, so the imperviousness thing is just, uh, you know, a caveat that if the drainage situation does not change, then there's really no change or no need for a drainage plan. And where a waiver is, uh, stating that, that it's not necessary, a deferment would be just deferring till later time, so.
Can I, can I ask one question while you're up there?
Yeah, sure.
Should a deferment or waiver be, uh, considered if there's an existing structure on the, on the property? So say, you know, there's a, there was one for some reason, but nobody knows why, you know, there's an existing detention, retention, whatever you wanna, wanna say. If it already has one on there, should we require it, no matter?
Well, um, I've never run into that.
Okay, yeah, if it's, if it's a rare enough thing that it doesn't matter, then.
Yeah, I don't recall.
I thought we just had one not too long ago, where they had one that they kind of halfway filled in or.
Yeah, it wasn't really a legal one, it just kind of existed. That's probably one of those things where if we have it in our land use records, we could probably dig back and see what that was capable of doing, I.
Sure. Maybe a new drainage plan would not be necessary.
We might be able to see if what's there is sufficient, and I, um, so when we get all our applications in, we, we send it over to Jay for a review, and obviously if there's, um, a feature already on there, we could do some homework and try and see if we have records to provide as part of it.
Yeah, fair enough.
That's something like that could be rolled into a new plan fairly, you know, cheaply and, and, um, just use the, the drainage that's on or the feature that's already there, so, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
So, uh, on this issue, deferment or a waiver, because those are totally separate animals. Uh, you know, a deferment is just that, you're deferring until some specified point in the future where a waiver is a, is a from here forward, a request that, uh, to, to not comply with a certain provision in, in the, in the regs. But this comes before the board for approval, it's not a staff level approval. And so I don't, and I'm just making sure, I just wanna check with you to make sure that we don't need to further differentiate between the two or have different language for when a waiver's appropriate or when a deferment is appropriate. As long as it comes before the board and staff has a chance to present a, a staff position on it, I, I think we're okay in this section, is that your feeling?
Yes, I, I think so too. I mean, the normal understanding of waiver is, you know, I, I think in the past, that was some of the language that was confusing, uh, that waiving it, you know, was understood as deferring it until later time. So that was at least my intent with the wording, wording in this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
One quick question. Where in the regulations does it allow you to make the distinction between you need an RPE drainage plan and where you don't? Because I'm not seeing that. I, I'm, everything I read here, everything is required to have a professional engineer's drawing, is it not?
If, if it meets that criteria, and that, I think that's at the center of the issue, if, if the, if the property division or the development does not change the, the hydraulics or the hydrology, then that plan is not needed. And that's, I think what, uh, is clarified here, uh, too, because some developments, they qualified for a drainage plan. I had, you know, a couple of times, an engineer say, well, there's no change to the hydrology, and he can't really write or, uh, a plan, and it costs, you know, somebody money to, to make that evaluation, that while there's not really a plan needed here, there's no way actually to, to write one. So, that, this kind of has thresholds to where a plan is needed and, uh, and where it's not. And with, but when it is, it's, you know, a professional engineer drawings, uh, approval is required, and we, you know, I would look at it, um, and make a recommendation for approval and, and I guess the same process would be followed.
Okay, further comments or questions? Okay, so we have before us the, um, request, uh, to revise the drainage plan and report adding a new chapter to the zoning regulations, um, which would become effective immediately.
Yep, since this would be a part of the subdivision regulations, XXIIII, um, this would be for immediate adoption.
For immediate adoption. Is this, and so are we in, are we on rewrite of section 23 or a request chapter 10 drainage plan, drainage plan report? Sorry, I think we, I think we dealt with the rewrite of section 23, didn't we?
Yep, yeah, so it'd be rewrite of section XXIIII.
Yeah, that's what we're.
That's where, okay, all right.
Yep.
Okay? Do I have a motion?
I move we approve the rewrite of section 23 general requirements. Did we have any amendments to that?
Yeah, so the specific amendment was that under the waiver and deferral section, that, that we modify those to be or clauses rather than and clauses.
That's my motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? Gardner?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right. Now we're on chapter 10, Drainage Plan Report, adding a new chapter to the zoning regulations in reference to the drainage plan and re, report.
Yes, so, um, the proposal in front of you is a rewrite of the, sorry, is a, um, is for chapter 10 Drainage Planner Report and the Fremont County zoning resolution regulations. The engineer has reviewed these regulations and made additional requirements, deletions, and recommendations. Strike through show what was removed, yellow shows what's been added, and this, if this rewrite is viewed as favorable, it'll have an adoption date of April in 2024. If any substantial changes are requested, those will be brought back to this board. And this is the same exact drainage report as we just discussed.
Okay, comments from, questions from the board?
I'd make a motion to approve this with the, uh, with the prior suggestions of or, not and.
We have a motion, and I'm paging through here, I'm not sure that we've got deferments on page five.
Something missing?
Deferments. And there's, there's actually not specific language here, the deferment language are, uh, is different than the previous that we've looked at.
Is it?
It is. 10.3.
Hold on one second.
Good job for making sure.
That is different. Okay, my apologies. Almost the same exact document. Since this one's going in the Fremont County zoning resolution, it's a little bit different. The, um, this drainage plan, everything in it except for the deferments, uh, those deferments specifically spoke to lot sizes and criteria, why you could recommend a deferment. Um, since this one's gonna be in the Fremont County zoning resolution, which it would apply to our SRUs, our CUPs, our CDPs, um, all of our other projects, um, that's why the language is different right here.
Okay, and it speaks to, um, the deferment may be authorized by the board, meaning us and the Board of County Commissioners, for commercial, commercial development applications until the commercial development plan or building permit application for each lot is submitted. And those are two separate conditions, is that correct? As I understand that, in other words.
Yep, absolutely.
Commercial development or if it's residential, uh, until building permit application.
Yes, sir, and that, that would basically be for those subdivisions that defer their drainage, so that would, their drainage plan is triggered at the time of building.
Right, gotcha. So we have a motion, is that correct?
Can I retract my motion?
Yeah, you wanna modify, modify your motion there?
Okay, so that deals with deferments, I guess, uh, where chapter 23, you might have to walk me through that again.
Chapter 20, um.
Where chapter 23 was talking about deferments.
Or waivers.
Or waivers.
Yes, this is purely deferment.
Purely deferment, so this will be replacing, chapter 10 will replace, uh, what, what we just approved, 23, or be in addition to.
Um, so what you just approved is in the subdivision regulations, which is a separate document.
Okay.
This one is for the Fremont County zoning resolution. Currently, every time in the zoning resolution we reference a drainage plan, it tells you to go to that other document to see the requirements, and, and that's just kind of silly.
Understood, thank you.
So, this is a new section, um, within the zoning resolution.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second, we have a motion and second, any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Okay. Are we halfway through the list?
We've, we've got three left, sir. I'll talk quick.
Halfway through this page, okay. We have rewrite of chapter nine zone changes.
All right, so planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has removed some regulations from the zone change one to make the application process more efficient and effective by simplifying the application process. Staff has removed the final development plan from zone change two and added new regulations that require a land use permit approval to efficiently be able to continue, uh, with the yearly inspections of these permits. We have also changed the format to match the format of the Fremont County zoning resolution. Strike throughs have been removed, yellow highlighting shows proposed, and if this is viewed as favorable, it'll have an adoption date of April. Any substantial changes, uh, to this draft will be presented back to this commission for recommendations. So, around the first page, you can see where it says zone change two, application with land use permit. We kind of broke things out, it, it's very similar to how we do things now, but we wanted to make the process a little more clear, and I'll get into that as we continue on. So the zone change one is one we're taking a different zone and we're making it residential. We recently had one of these and the applicant had expressed all the hoops he had to jump through, and he thought it was quite significant, everything he was required to do to make his property residential. So with that, um, what is it? We have removed a bunch of items to try and streamline the zone change one. We took out evidence the property was not properly zoned when existing, or, uh, was not properly zoned when existing zoning was imposed. We removed that one. Evidence that there's a public need for the zone change, evidence that zone change, um, will be county and neighborhood benefit and that it will tend to preserve and promote property values in the neighborhood. The proof of access, uh, this used to have to have a roadway impact analysis that needed to be completed, and if you were under the trip count, you still had to pay an engineer to certify that you were under the trips. You're switching to a residential, primarily single-family, um, zone, so generally the trips are, are pretty low. So that was an added hoop and hurdle and cost that applicants had to go through. So a statement of how the proposal meets the intent and purpose of this resolution, a statement of how the proposed use meets the intent, purpose, and applicable goals and objectives of the master plan, evidence that the proposed zone change will be in harmony and compatible with the surrounding land uses and development in the area, uh, the proof of water, the proof of sanitation, um, and we've removed some of the requirements on the site plan as well. And then we, let's see, we added one thing that said revisions to be made to the drawings that are, as deemed necessary by the department, commission, or board. With, with the wording that we had, um, we would request things and the feedback we were getting is, well, I think I provided that, so that's good enough. And, um, so we kind of clarified some of the language that if, if we're asking for it, there's a reason. So this, this hopefully gives either the department, the commission, or the, um, county commissioners the ability to ask for stuff a little, uh, ask for, for specific things a little more clearly. But, um, all of those things I read off were items that we wound up removing from the zone change one process, uh, to try and ease up any hurdles they may have. In the zone chain, do you guys want to discuss that one before we go to zone change two?
Sure, I wouldn't mind it. So, that could be going from really any, any zone to rez, right? Could be going from either ag or industrial, I mean, really anything to rez, is that correct?
So zone change one, for zone change applications that change property to residential zone districts, residential one, residential two, residential three, low density, um, the application package shall contain the following. So yep, so that's to go to a residential use from a more intense use generally.
I'm just, I guess, wondering more out loud rather than, as a utility fellow, um, I think I would like to still see proof of waterproof sewer, you know, that, that there is the ability to serve those, those lots if they're gonna become residential.
Okay.
If there's no ability to serve them, then, you know, why?
And that's, that's one of the things the department had discussion with. You know, regardless of what the zone would be, when they went to do a project, they would have to get proof of water, proof of sewer. to get proof of water, proof of sewer. So when we were viewing this, that you're, say you're making it from a more intense zone to a residential zone because it's compatible, we kind of viewed that that proof of water would occur at the time of either when they do a subdivision, or the, the lot line adjustment, the boundary line just, we, we kind of viewed that would be covered a little bit later in the process. While it's, it's great to know all of that information, especially upfront, we didn't know if that necessarily impacted just changing the zone.
Yeah, and, and I can appreciate that for sure, that at some point later on, they're going to have to show proof of water, even if it's a single family. I mean, they're going to have to get a tap, they're going to have to do something of that nature.
So we, we thought that that would be covered in a, in a different application process down the road rather than changing the, the type of zone that it is.
Okay.
But if, if that's something you wanted to...
No, I just wanted to talk about it more than anything, I know. Yeah.
It is covered.
Yeah.
The point is that it will be covered in, in the appropriate point in the process. There's no sense doing it way up in front when it's not...
We, we thought we might be asking for things a little too soon.
Yeah, I can appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, and then with that 10, the strike through, I, I do kind of like that, that you're making sure that the residential will be in harmony with, with, you know, if they're going industrial to residential, well, you know, does that work with what's around it?
Yeah.
So again, just wanted to make sure that that's covered somewhere.
Okay. In, in order to do a Zone Change, you either have to be touching the zone or in very close proximity to the zone that you're trying to change to. So it wouldn't be like, say, out in the center of wholesome, that's all industrial, that, you know, they, they can whack off a lot and make it residential right in the center because nothing's touching, it's not close. So our thought was that it would either be touching the zone that's changing to, or in very close proximity, and you'd have those uses already in that area, that residential use already there, and that would kind of safeguard that.
Sure. But would we want it still, you know, if it wasn't in what the county master plan, I know it's kind of something separate, but county master plan kind of does dictate out these areas, so, you know, if, if we're letting them do this, you know, then it could be stair stepping its way into areas that, that the county master plan calls out as, you know, something different.
Okay.
Is that, is that...
No, it absolutely does make sense. We, we had a lot of discussion on this, and I, I know we had an application in front of us recently, and that promoted a lot of discussion about, you know, with trying to come down from a more intense zone district to a, essentially a less intense zone district, were we making people go through too many hoops?
Sure.
Some of the, the folks that come in are, are having difficulties. They find that, like, compatibility with the master plan, when they have to answer that question, they're like, I don't, I don't know how to write this.
Yeah.
And we can't write it for them. We, we're getting a lot of people that are like, they, it's, they feel it's more of an opinion piece, that they have to add to something and not necessarily part of something measurable. So we, we get a lot of pushback on some of those questions.
Okay. And do we lose a little bit of power as far as being able to dictate how the master plan is called out if it's not considered during a Zone Change?
So I, I can absolutely highlight the ones that you guys would want back in and add those back there and strengthen stuff up.
Should be back in, again, just wanted to have the conversation. If the rest of the board feels like it, it doesn't matter, then I'm, I'm buying that too, I just wanted to broach it.
Yep. Yeah, no, I mean, I think all of our goal here is to make the best product we can.
Absolutely.
While also trying to see if there's anything that can be cut out.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily have an impact. So I'd be, depending on your guys' opinion, if, if you want a couple of those back in, I'll just note it and unstrike through.
The, from my perspective, those, the, those are kind of apples and oranges. Conformance with the master plan, because you can have non-conforming areas within your, within your boundaries that, that are not currently conforming with, with a master plan that may be in place versus a, a Zone Change in compatibility with surrounding uses. So you can, you can have essentially, I believe, you know, an area that's non-conforming with your master plan, that, that, that is a different question to be answered than compatibility with surrounding uses.
Yeah, agreed.
And so, so maybe what the resolution is, is not to necessarily undelete 10, but to, but to perhaps add a new 10 that says evidence that the proposed Zone Change is compatible with the master plan. Does that...
Wasn't one of those already in there that was struck as a, but it was...
Where is that?
Is that nine?
Is that nine?
Nine.
Those, the master plan, yeah. Nine is struck empty.
Which was, sorry, give me one second. So 9111D still has it in there that evidence that the proposed Zone Change will be in conformity to the current Fremont County master plan. So it's in one section but not the other?
Good catch.
Okay, yeah, so if it's left in 911, if they still have to do it.
We'll bring nine back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
So, so then the, the other one could be struck because we already have it in the pre-see.
So, my coordinator clarified for me. You only have to provide one of those items that it references on...
At least one, thank you.
Yes. So that, I believe that's why that would be left in there.
Understood.
Resolve it for you then, Travis?
I guess honestly not really, because if, they, they wouldn't have to show evidence that, you know, it's a performance with the current Fremont master plan if, if they were able to meet any one of those other three. So again, I just, I guess I want to be careful that if we're going to have a master plan, that we have the ability to, to adhere to it, that we don't have non-conforming, and just because we have a non-conforming, and there's something touching that non-conforming there, we allow the expansion of that non-conforming.
Yes, that makes sense. We can, so number nine, we will remove the strike through and add that back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, further ques... So we want to take nine one separate from nine two, is that what the suggestion was? Or can we...
Just for you guys' question, the comments was all just to kind of separate it, so we didn't go through both of them.
Both of them, okay, great. Okay. So were any questions or comments? And have you covered nine twos?
What was that again, sir? Oh yeah, so Zone Change 2, if you guys are, are ready.
Sure.
So Zone Change 2, Zone Changes, the, excuse me, for Zone Changes that change property from multi, to multifamily, business, or industrial zone districts, high-density, manufactured home park, rural highway business, business, airport, industrial park, and industrial. So this is the Zone Change that makes it more intense. So we currently allow for a Zone Change 2 with a use designation plan that gives you a year, excuse me, gives you a year to submit your final plan. So if you have an idea of a project, but you're not ready to, for final approval, you can come to us with a Zone Change 2 with use designation, you have a year to submit to us, either like a commercial development plan or a subdivision in order to do that. And then we have a Zone Change 2 with final designation. And Zone Change 2 is a, with the final designation is if your project is ready to turnkey, and you know what you're doing, you can come in and do your Zone Change 2 with a final designation, and you hit it all in one process. So the final designation is very similar to like an SRU or a commercial development plan. So we, when we look at the final designation, we kind of use the criteria of an SRU or a commercial development plan as the, the go-to for that. So, yes. Oh, sorry, final development plan, I'm using the wrong verbiage. So since we're using the criteria of a commercial development plan or an SRU, depending on, you know, which one of those permits applies, we, we felt it was better that you could do a Zone Change 2 with an SRU or with the final development, or with the, with the commercial development plan. And so you'd fill out your Zone Change 2 application, and then you would fill out your SRU application. It would all be one fee, and it would be viewed as one topic, but we would have kind of a, basically our paperwork would match what we're doing. That, that's kind of the, the change we're proposing to this. The other part of it is, right now, if you do a final designation plan, or a final, final designation, final development, for some reason I'm not getting that right. If you do a final development or a commercial development plan, once you get approval, the Planning and Zoning Department doesn't do any inspections from that point on, whereas for an SRU and a CUP, we do yearly inspections and just check compliance and make sure everything matches the site plan. So we felt it would be more efficient to have our paperwork match the process, and also have the ability to be doing our yearly inspections to check to see that compliance stays, rather than waiting till something got grossly out of compliance and created quite an issue. So with that rundown mentioned, I'll actually go through what we have here. So we struck through Final Development Plan and put in a subdivision application, special reuse permit, conditional use permit, or commercial development plan. Again, we struck through the Final Development Plan, referenced subdivision, and a subdivision application. Again, changed the verbiage to match from final development to subdivision, that next paragraph, final development to the SRU, CDP or CUP, changed the verbiage again. On 921 there, evidence that the property was not properly zoned when existing zoning was imposed, that, that has not been a criteria that we use, and can't really prove it, so we're, we're taking that one out. We referenced Drainage Plan down there at 11, reference a new section in the resolution for buffering and landscaping, so everything matches. And other than that, we kept it the same until we struck through 923 and 924 with those requirements, because if you're completing a Zone Change 2 application with an SRU, CUP, or SRU or CDP or subdivision, those applications cover your requirements, they cover your site plan, they cover everything a little more clearly. So that's why those have been struck through. And then, Zone Change 2 application with the land use permit, and that's referencing that SRU or CDP. And that, that's the major change here. We kind of changed, we changed our application process to match our, our actual process. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, then we have in front of us a request to rewrite Chapter nine Zone Changes. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
With suggested edits.
Exactly. That was a friendly modification to that. Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve with suggested edits. And a second, any further discussion? Please.
Aye, I'm, I'm sorry. Aye.
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 Okay. Now we're to request to rewrite Chapter six Review Procedures.
All right. Planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has taken the review procedures from various chapters throughout the Fremont County zoning resolution and compiled the procedures all in one location. Staff has added charts, application flow diagrams, new regulations, revised existing regulations, and removed some regulations. Strike throughs will show what's been removed, yellow highlighting will show what's new, and this will have the proposed rewrite, if viewed as favorable, will have an adoption date in April of 2024, and any substantial changes will be brought back to this board. So the current zoning resolution, every chapter basically had their criteria in it, and it, it just repeated all the way through. So what we tried to do is, we took the review procedures from various land use applications and just compiled them in, into one location. We added charts, so it's a little more easier to view, and hopefully it's a, it's a little more readable and understandable. So we, we took everything that was, standby, let me just see. We took what's in our current regulations and kind of changed the format, flow sheets, charts, and then removed and added a couple items. So, so we, on 64C, we removed the, the minimum, the initial application submittals that'll be made to the department, a minimum of 24 working days prior to the, the scheduled meeting, at which it will be considered. We had timelines in our regulations, and then people were not supplying us the, enough information for the application to be deemed complete, but they're pointing to our timelines that, well, I'm going to go on this at this date. And it was creating some friction of trying to get an application complete so it could be presentable. So our goal is, at the moment an application is complete and ready to be presented, be presented. There's no need to keep it around, but having verbiage like that in there was causing some pushback. So we figured it would be easier if we just removed that. So currently, we, when we get an application in, we send it out to various agencies for review. So that 641, this basically says that I have the ability to send it out to get feedback. It's something that has always been done, and it's a practice, but it didn't necessarily say it. We added the board to, the department will conduct a preliminary review of the application to determine the adequacy of the application for commission or board review. Board wasn't in there. So we added that. Our notice requirements, we, we kind of cleaned up our notice requirements for PUDs. So 646 Director Action, if an application is subject to, is subject to final decision by the director per Table 6A1, which is the first table, the director shall make a decision based on the review standards applicable to the application type. The decision shall be in writing for approvals and approvals with conditions. If denied, the denial will be accompanied by written findings of fact. And then Director Recommendation 647, if an application is subject to a final decision by another decision-making body per Table 61A, the director shall prepare a written staff report accompanied by the application exhibits and recommendations of approval or denial. So all things that we do, just actually detailed. Again, we've always had the burden of proof is on the applicant. We actually have that in writing now, that 67. And we currently operate with a simultaneous processing, but we didn't have that in writing. So if you have two applications in front of us, and we could hear them in a staggered manner to where one can be approved, so the other one's eligible, we're absolutely going to run it that way to keep your timeline down. We're not going to make you wait for an approval before we present another product. And 610 Extensions of Contingencies, it currently has it to where the board can grant a six-month, the board may extend the time period of submittal of contingency items of application approval upon documented, documented showing of good cause. And it allows for, so they can extend it. We change it to where the director can do the first extension, and that the board will get review on every extension at that. As long as all contingencies are being met and they're submitting the proper paperwork, we weren't sure if that met the level of needing to go all the way up to the board just to say you can operate six months longer, but if after that six months you haven't moved forward, then you're in front of the board. So we thought that that may be helpful, kind of streamline some of the stuff that, that occurs. We removed, the department shall schedule a request to the extension, the next regular board... board meeting, so we removed 6. Because of changing that to the director for the first extension. And then, 8 there addresses, any extensions after the first extension granted shall be reviewed by the board, period. So, it gives one in office, and after that, it has to go back in front of people. And, that is this chapter.
Okay. Do we have questions or comments?
Surprise, I do.
What do you got?
A couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Do administrative approvals still have to go out to agency referral?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, section 642, page 8, should that read, the applicant or representative has to attend? No, a lot of times, we just have the representative, not the applicant, show up.
Yes, so that's, that's a good catch.
So, that should say applicant or representative.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? The, in reviewing 6.4.1, the second paragraph there says, the department will conduct a preliminary review for commission or board review, and we're adding board, I think we're adding board there. The, so, I haven't gone through the regulations with this particular idea in mind, but we're making a distinction between the commission, which is us, and the board, which is the Board of County Supervisors.
Yep.
Commissioners.
Yep.
And, the, are we, are we, are references to the board consistent then throughout the regulations? You may want to look at that, because, for instance, I think in deferment, it says board, which means that, means that if we're making that distinction, as I understand it, we may not be eligible then to make a finding there. If only the board has that power. Do you understand my concern?
I do, I do.
And, and sorry, this is, that's, that's, that's a lot of review. You might, you might, it might be worthwhile to go through and make sure that when we say board, that we, that we're, if appropriate, to include the commission, that it is done so.
A lot of them, as far as like, to make sure it's good for the commission, it's always going to end up going to the board. There are some applications that the planning commission does not see, like, the temporary use permits and stuff, so it was having to be added. This would have came from a different section where it would have definitely went to you guys first. And so, since the temporary use permits and a couple other ones don't come here, I did have to add the board in there. So, it should be right through the rest of it, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it was going to be going to both, now that I'm talking about all of our land use.
That's certainly something we can review and make sure it's consistent.
Yeah. I, the, this, I don't, I don't know if I want to pull it back up, but the deferment language, the waiver or deferment language, I think, was a place where board appeared rather than ord or commission or and commission, whatever might be appropriate. Okay.
Yeah, so, and that's something that we can certainly review, and then if we notice that that's an issue, when we present it all as one whole, we'll probably, that will be one of the things that will get brought back up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. So, that's the end of the staff presentation on Chapter 6 Review Procedures. Any other further questions or comments? Then, I'm open to a motion.
I'm open, we approve the rewrites of Chapter 6. And there weren't any contingencies or anything under with her?
Yeah, there was the one, add representative.
Add the representative to the owner.
So noted.
Or applicant.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Rudel. Any further discussion? All right, start us off.
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi.
Okay. This is the one we've been looking for, the last one.
Best for last, sir, best for last.
Please, start us off, Chapter 8.
All right. Planning and zoning has recognized the need for a review and update to the regulations. Staff has taken the land use permits, SRU, CUP, CDPs, and TUPs, and reserved a chapter for them all in the Fremont County zoning resolution. Staff has rewritten Chapter 6, Sections 5.6, 5.7, 15, 8.7, 8.10, 8.11, 8.14, 8.15, and 8.16. We have also changed the format to match the format of the new Fremont County zoning resolution. Staff has revised the commercial development plan requirements in regard to the moratorium. Strike throughs will show removals, yellow highlighting will show what's new, and if this is deemed favorable, it'll be an April adoption date, and substantial changes will be brought back to this board. So, as I read in that opener, you could see that we pulled a lot of stuff from all over our regs right now and compiled it in one location. So, we have that definition for that contractor's yard two that we had discussed on another time. We added an allowed use business permit with application requirements, and we will get right into it. The following uses have special development requirements and/or require additional information to be provided for review and approval. Let's see here. The adult uses, we, we wound up striking out, spelling out each individual zone district and reference any residentially zoned property, which, that certainly cut off quite a bit of room in our pick, accomplished the same goal. Antenna or tower, 813A. The lot size shall be determined with the height of the antenna or tower or other development requirements that may be, that may govern the size. H evidence that demonstrates that no existing antenna and/or towers or alternative technology can accommodate the applicant's proposed antenna or tower. Surrounding topography, reference to surrounding tree coverage and foliage, and design of the tower in particular, reference the characteristics that have an effect on reducing and eliminating visual impacts. And, we just put in design of tower in reference to reducing visual impacts, so we kind of cleared that up a little bit. So, for towers, we changed a few things. We do probably five to eight tower co-locations a year. That's an in-office approval, and that's an upgrading of the antennas or the structure around the base. As long as you're not changing the height, they have to fill out an application, they have to provide engineering, they have to provide a site plan, they, it's an in-office review for this. But even though we do all those every year, we don't have, you know, written criteria of it. So, we managed to get that into our regulations. That contractor's yard two, that's where it specifies that it is five or more vehicles, not considered SMM. All SMM shall be registered or appear on the personal property tax to be in compliance. That has a larger lot size, half an acre versus a couple thousand square feet of that contractor's yard one. Let's, with the, it's important to note with the vehicle count, there can be more than five commercially vehicle, commercially used passenger vehicles used in association with the contractor's yard, the number shall be determined by the board. So, it doesn't give a limiting factor, it gives, it's not based off of the application that's being presented us, and it would be this commission's recommendation, and ultimately, the county commissioners limiting the factor of how many vehicles would be used. So, that's one thing that we have changed, or that, we've created this. We, we, you have a smaller, less intense contractor's yard, that may be your smaller landscaper, mason, whatever, and then we have, in certain circumstances, you have the ability to have a more intense one. Kennel, suitable drainage method, we removed a suitable drainage method, shall be provided to eliminate excess water from the facilities. That was one of those things where people were, if they're coming through for an SRU for a kennel, they were actually tasked with having an engineered drainage study done on their property. Of all the kennels in our county, most of them, you probably wouldn't know it's a kennel, so we view that as a substantial cost while they're already doing an SRU application, already doing a site plan, they're already doing a lot of things. A drainage plan for maybe a 50 by 100 area, we kind of felt that was a large ask. So, we removed that. And, E specifically said, a copy of license issued by the Department of Ag as related to the rules and regulations pertaining to the administration and enforcement of Pet Animal Care Act and facilities. So, we kind of streamlined that, and we took away the greyhound racing commission language, and we put in, a kennel shall be conducted in compliance with all applicable county, state, and federal laws, and shall provide copies of the licenses. We felt that was a much greater catch-all than being as specific, as specific as we were. So, on 817 for solid waste disposal site, it says, which applies within the incorporated and unincorporation portions of Fremont County. But, we have no regulating authority on the incorporated areas. We kind of felt that needed a little bit of cleanup. All of our solid waste disposal units are special reuse permits, but for some reason, our regulations, we refer to them as a conditional use permit or a special reuse permit, but we don't have any of them that are a CUP. So, we took away the CUP out of that, they're, they're an SRU, that's, that's what they go by. So, we did a little bit of, you'll see a lot of strike throughs through the conditional use permit, so that way, it references that special reuse permit throughout this. The, here, you're going to see, up here, C, oh, E, okay, on E, revocation or suspension of permit. This is listed multiple times throughout our regulations for each type of thing that's been compiled, so we just have it listed once. So, it didn't need to necessarily be here because we address it as a kind of a standalone a little bit later for all of these types of land use applications. So, you'll see that that's why that's been moved, as well as the change in ownership, design, and operation. Just make sure I'm not skipping over anything. 82, an allowed use business permit. This is something that we felt was kind of needed. Right now, in the business zone district, there's allowed uses that are allowed to be there. But, what we're finding is, a lot of folks don't necessarily research what the regulations are to see if they're allowed, and if it's a business zone district, they just start up, which, we don't want to inhibit business. But, the thought was if, if they're able to submit an in-office permit that is a minimal, minimal ask and minimal fee, we'd be able to confirm that what they're trying to put in that location is actually allowed, rather than waiting until it's a code complaint and having to make them shut down their business. Because very often, we get people that start a business in a location, and it's, it's just not allowed in that zone, but they didn't know. So, we figured if we had a very minimal, quick turnaround, you know, provide your plot plan, show you have your parking, show you have water, show you have sanitation, what do you do? Kind of a bare-bones sort of thing, that we can get these people started, and they could actually know that what they're doing there is allowed, and that they, they're not going to have to close down after they finally get discovered, or somebody complains on them. So, we, we came up with that idea, so hopefully, that's favorable. Commercial development plan 833, a questionnaire. So, to determine if a commercial development plan is required, a questionnaire shall be completed. If a violation is suspected, the code enforcement, if a violation is suspected by Fremont County Code Enforcement in rural highway, business, airport, industrial, industrial park, industrial, and high density, a commercial development plan questionnaire will be required. And, that's one of those things where code enforcement will be out doing their inspections, and all of a sudden, a business opens up its doors. And, the questionnaire, I think, is one, maybe two pages, very simple, it's no fee, and it's part of a criteria with commercial development plans to see if it's required or not. So, this gives us the ability for, to be able to, if we think a violation or we think something's going on, we have the ability to request that they, they complete a questionnaire. We took out 8341, it said, a commercial development plan shall be in effect for three years from the date of approval by the board unless the extension has been granted by formal action by the board. Hold on one second here. Oh, yep, so, during that meeting, they're going to propose what their phasing is, and their phasing can be up to, it cannot exceed a six-year timeframe. So, if we're saying that you could propose phasing and it allows you up to that six years, we didn't feel that saying it's in effect for three years unless you, it's something to be covered during the application process rather than after the fact, we felt. If they think it's going to take a couple of years to get everything squared away, they could request that, that's, it's not a large ask, and it doesn't cost anything, and that will be kind of covered. Commercial development plan application will be required to be submitted for any of the following. We took out 1, which is that any proposal to develop vacant property which is currently located in medium density, high density, and then it, note, as per Colorado statute, any property zone medium or high density will be required to make application for an appropriate subdivision process prior to the development if more than one dwelling is imposed. So, we struck that through. We removed neighborhood business on 2 and added the newer high-density current commercial development plans, it was any substantial change of use or occupancy as per the building code, from one use that is allowed in the zone district to another. Let's see, in the medium, medium density districts, high-density neighborhood business, rural highway business, airport, industrial park, industrial zone district as determined by the Planning and Zoning Department. So, we kind of cleaned that one up a little bit. Number 4 refers to the resolution that was in place. To handle the commercial development plan moratorium that's been in place, I had some discussions in the building, and what we came up with is, any expansion and/or enlargement of an existing use by 25% growth within a five-year period, and the high-density residence, rural highway business, business, airport, industrial park, or industrial zone districts. Any more than that 25% in that five-year period would trigger a commercial development plan. So, before, it used to be any expansion, the moratorium said, you could do all expansion you want, you didn't have to do it, we kind of think the sweet spot is allowing people a 25% increase over five years. That allows for a considerable amount of growth with just in-office permitting, and if you have more growth than that, that's fantastic, but you're going to have to at least submit a new site plan and go through the commercial development plan process. We also have in there, let's see, any expansion of land in the HDR, RHB, or rural highway business, business, airport, industrial park, and industrial zone districts with an existing business use. So, that's, that's part of our current regs. If you try to, say you have a business and you buy a lot next door, as soon as you add that additional land, you have to do a CDP. If you're planning expanding your business across onto the new parcel, whether or not you've removed the lot line or anything like that, if you buy new land, you have to do it, more than 25% of an increase in a five-year period, you have to do it. Those are kind of the triggers to do a commercial development plan and come back for review. Those are kind of the triggers to do a commercial development plan and come back for review.
And while we're here, just a quick question. So if these are adopted, then the, that marked in blue goes away, is that correct?
What's that? Yes, the moratorium, this is the answer to the moratorium.
Answer to the moratorium, and so if this is adopted, then the...
Yep. So starting in April, if you have a business lot and you buy the neighboring lot and want to expand over commercial development plan, starting in April, over the next five years, if you expand over twenty-five percent, commercial development plan.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. We have one that's not required. So we took away a bunch of things on one of CDP is not required. On eight four, we took away location and put parcel. That's how we commonly refer to parcels. Application requirements. C there, we wound up taking away. So C, we have a lot of folks that have, say, a larger parcel and want to do a project on a smaller portion of it. Our current regs say that you need to subdivide off that chunk and it's got to be its own standalone kind of deal. Through the permitting process, it's pretty simple for us to be able to establish what your boundaries are. And your lot may not be eligible for subdivision depending on the size. And if you don't want to cover your entire lot with that business use, but say it's an SRU and like an ag forestry, but you also have a residence on it, this would allow for you to have it remain one lot and just have your parcel boundary identified rather than having to turn the entire parcel into that special use and losing all other uses on the parcel. So we figured that would give folks some flexibility with the land they have and the projects that they have going on. We refer to the drainage plan on the following page in the new chapter ten. On eleven, we struck through the existing zoning district of the land to be used. A lot of folks don't know what district they're in and they come to us to ask. So if they're coming to us to ask, that's something we can help them with. We don't need to make that a requirement. Number nineteen, their architectural rendering and perspective. This one's new. So in SRU or a commercial development plan, we're requesting an architectural rendering, so we have a visual of what the project's actually going to be. It's one thing looking at it from a site plan, from a bird's eye view. It's very common to, in land use, to be able to get an architectural rendering, so the planning commission, the county commissioners, the public, they can actually see a rendering of what the proposal's going to look like. We didn't feel that was too large of an ask. We reduced the number of copies for site plans from three to two. Eight five there, amendments to contingencies or conditions. No changes to contingencies or conditions of approval may be granted unless the application provided by the department is submitted. So if you want to request a amendment to the contingencies or conditions, we'll provide you the form and you have to submit it back. Change of operator, transfer of ownership. So we added commercial development plan. We referenced the original approved plan, that they have to guarantee that the original all obligations, conditions, and guarantees originally imposed upon the original approved plan will be met, which is how we operate now, but we have it in writing. And we reference that commercial development plan again for those change of ownerships. Right now, our minor modifications, eight seven one. It says any change to a site plan requires a major modification. There essentially are no minor modifications that you can do. So if you changed anything to your SRU or CUP or commercial development plan, our current regs really didn't allow for a minor. We came up with minor modifications that will meet the following criteria. Will not result in an increase to existing and approved structures greater than ten percent. Will not result in an increase to existing approved disturbance areas by greater than ten percent. And will not result in an increase to the existing approved development by greater than ten percent. And will not include any additional land to the boundary area. So let's see, this would require an application supplied by us, which right now, if somebody wanted to try and do a minor, they just submit a letter with what they want. If approved, it goes in the file.
Just a quick comment while we're right there, but on that list of requirements, I think those are ands, that each of those have to be satisfied to be able to do, to be able to have a minor modification.
Yep. If it's any of those things, then...
Is it or or and? See, as I read it, it's and. Will not result, because they're written in the negative. It's not, so it's and, I think.
We could add the and in between all of those?
Yes.
Yep.
Because I think that's the intent, is that that each of those conditions have to be satisfied. If one of those is not satisfied, then it's a major.
Yep. So then we would actually supply an application to the complete, can complete, which would include a statement detailing the scope of the modification, site plan referring to the to the, a site plan which would be drawn to professional standards, and the department, commission, and/or board may require additional information from the applicant in order to perform an adequate review of the letter or application. So we supply criteria, we supply an application, and we and we have an ability for people to actually be able to do a minor. It talks about we could process a minor in thirty working days. And then we have a major, which basically is more than ten percent on all of those same items. So if it's under ten, it could be a minor, and then if it's more than ten, it would be considered a major. And then down in eight eleven and eight twelve, this has all been put into the review procedures section. So it's, that's why that's all struck through. Eight fourteen one, application requirements for TUPs. We originally had twenty working days, and that cuts people really short because sometimes they don't know what they need to be presenting to us. And with temporary use permits for the first three years, having to go to the Board of County Commissioners. If somebody sees that, hey, if I submit twenty days out from a meeting, I'm at that meeting, they may not be, and then their event cannot happen. So we have, they're recommended to submit at least forty-five days prior to the event to extend that working timeline. So there's no surprises. Eight fourteen three, department notifications. It talks about at least ten days prior. We switched that to fourteen. And on notifications, we remove the date of scheduled board meeting. And that's because sometimes these people send notifications out and they're not going to make the meeting that they put on the thing, and now people are misinformed and they're contacting us about a meeting that that project's not going to be on. So we... What's that? Yeah, because those notifications are sent out before they make application typically, because they provide the notifications as part of their application. So an applicant has no idea when that's going to be scheduled. So we removed that requirement. Eight fourteen four one one, review of temporary towers. Again, longer working deadlines, so that way we can make sure everything is going to be complete. Reduce the number of copies from three to two. Site plan requirements, again, the the reduced copies. And I may be so bold as saying that's it.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board, from the commission? I do have one comment. Back up at eight point four point one, bullet item eighteen. Let me see if I can get there. That's quite a ways back up. Eight point four point one. And so eight point four is requirement, application requirements for CUP, SRU, and CDP.
Page sixteen.
And, thank you, page sixteen. I'm probably going to go by it here. But the requirement is that concerns the mining permit and requests a copy of the mining permit. If, I haven't, I'm having a hard time finding it again here. It must be getting late. Must be past my dinner time. Yes.
Can I ask you again which section?
So it's eight point four point one, bullet item eighteen. Sixteen. Thank you. Yes. Well, so the mining operators should submit a copy of the mining and reclamation plan? I would recommend that you add in there and the last two inspections conducted by the Department of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety. That's DRMS. The last, and a copy of the last two inspections conducted by the Division of Reclamation, Mining, and Safety. And the reason for that is because whenever we have a applicant in front of us that has such a mining and reclamation plan, that's always been one of my questions. Do you have a permit and are you in compliance with it? And this would allow us to review that, even though it may be outside of our purview for any enforcement actions. It is something to be considered in an applicant's total application.
We could make that change. We can add that.
Anything else?
I do.
Okay.
Sorry.
Fire away.
Page six. So for the contractor's yard number two.
Yes, sir.
Will that just be for new applications or will current contractor's yard have to adhere?
That'd be for new applications.
Okay.
Yep. And we have that in our regulations now. When we establish contractor's yards, we have the verbiage in there that anything established before this date is essentially grandfathered.
Okay. Section eight point two, page twelve. The allowed use business requirements. I'm seeing now a plan showing all utilities, including gas, water. So will that be a referral?
Yes.
Out for a referral?
Yep. So...
When they're looking for those permits, will I have a chance as utilities to give a looksee?
We would treat that probably similar to like a home occupation permit where we sent it out to all the various agencies to make sure that location is covered.
Sure.
And then providing everyone greenlights it, then it's right back up.
Yeah, I just saw for proof of water, but we want to take a looksee to make sure that, you know, their intended use doesn't change what requirements we have on them.
We would handle that as an in-office approval and send it out to the agencies that we would typically send it out to.
Okay. Page thirteen, eight three five. The moratorium.
Yes, sir.
So twenty-five percent seems a bit, a bit high, again, from a utility standpoint. So if we're seeing an airport or we're seeing, I know that Fremont County doesn't currently have any like large multi, like apartments or whatnot, but a twenty-five or even a ten percent expansion is something that we would certainly want to see a commercial development plan, you know, where how they're going to provide what they're going to do. So I would just suggest lowering that number to ten percent. I know that that kind of puts undue, I mean, that's kind of the problem with using percentage, right? When you have something very small, ten percent of a hundred square feet, why am I doing, you know, versus ten percent of, you know, a hundred acres? You know, so that is just kind of the inherent problem with using percentage, but I would like to err on the side of low rather than high.
And I generally like being very conservative.
Yep.
This came about because originally, any expansion would be a commercial development plan.
Right.
And then we had folks saying that that was too restrictive and it was prohibiting business within the county. So then we did the moratorium where it was unlimited amount of expansion with only in-office review.
Well, and I'm all for defining it. I really like that.
So I tried to, I tried to find what the sweet spot would be, and a lower number was kind of... The feedback I got was a lower number wasn't necessarily where they wanted to be.
They wanted a twenty-five percent.
It, they wanted to allow for growth.
Yeah. Again, as a utility, we would very much like to see any expansion, really.
That's certainly more discussions that I can have and and see if, coming up into that next proposal, if that number, if I can get that number down.
Sure. Well, even if it's not a full commercial development plan, again, as long as we can see and say, okay, at least we have our say, or at least know about it. You know, because we may not necessarily have a new tap or anything like that. They may try to sneak it in, just, you know, under a building permit, expand the building, but not have to expand their tap, and that's where we have concern.
And would that be one of the things that maybe could be caught by one in-office permitting is applied for? That we'd be able to send that out to utilities as a four-year information, kind of like we do now with it?
Yeah.
So we might be able to keep that percentage correct, but know that in any of these projects, this goes out to the utility providers as like, hey, heads up, there's expansion. We can't really like, this, it meets our regs, but so it's on your guys' radar.
Yep.
So we can absolutely do that.
Yeah.
Because I think that's in our practice.
Checks my box for sure.
The moratorium.
Yeah. No, and I understand that for sure. Page nineteen, eight seven one. So again, utility standpoint, minor mods, just making sure that they would go out to utility referral. I know majors have to, so just making sure minors would.
Yep. Yeah. Any of the in-office approvals that we would be handling that way, that would still go up to the providers to make you guys aware.
Great. That's it. Easy enough.
Any other further comments, questions from the board? Okay, so we have before us the rewrite of chapter eight. And Travis, since you had some specific changes, perhaps you would make the motion.
I don't think that I actually had any changes. I was just getting clarity, again, that we were getting...
Clarity, okay.
Yeah, so I don't think I, in any of those, had any changes.
All right. So I did request a specific change, so I will move that we approve the rewrite of chapter eight with the addition of requesting a copy of the last two inspections from DRMS from any facilities or undertakings permitted by them.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's motion.
I will second that.
We've got a motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Aye.
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 All right, is there any further?
I'd like, first of all, I'd like to thank you and the rest of the staff. You've done a fine job. I know this is a lot of work putting it together. Also look forward to the master plan being updated, which will also be a Herculean task. We've made a lot of changes here and we've all agreed, you know, they're good changes and we've approved them. What do you think the general reaction is going to be to the people who come in the next twelve months with developments as far as these new regulations?
I, I would like to think that, you know, so I've been in the county now for about five years total. You know, my staff has been here a minute and we have folks that come in and provide feedback all the time. So with going through these regulations, we found the hiccups within our own documents. We found the hiccups in our applications. We know what the normal complaints are and pressure that we get from people about some of what we require. So our hope is that we've made made it an easier process while still covering all the bases. So I'm hoping for positive feedback, but I know we still have people that come into the office that have no idea what zoning they're in now. the office that have no idea what zoning they're in now, or what they can do. There's going to be a lot of education, certainly, but that's, that's kind of what we do at this point as well. So I'm hoping that I, we've allowed people to do more on their land with, with less restrictions or have more opportunities with what they own while still safeguarding their neighbors.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, that's a great response.
Okay, and thank you all for sticking with us, Jay and Tony and Eric and Joanne and Danielle and Dan, thank you all, and we appreciate the work you have done on this. And with that, we're adjourned.